Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Community Preservation Committee regular meeting. It is Thursday, September 21st, 2023. We are live at the Primetime Building and also available via Zoom. This meeting is being recorded and can be viewed at a later date on the Tom and Dyke YouTube channel. I'm recording the meeting to order at 5:30 PM. If you could all please rise to the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the devoted, courageous hands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. So we'll start off with committee member introductions. I'm Kevin Stilz Jr., Chairman and also the Parks and Recreation Representative.
I am Brad Cedroni, I'm a Net Lodge member.
Jonathan Gale, I'm Clerk of the zoning board and the AD coordinator for the town of Dyke.
Dave Harker Sin, a Cat Lodge member and Financial Officer.
Kat Gales, Historical Commission.
Dan Higgins, Planning Board Representative.
Good evening, I'm Paul Reynolds, the Conservation Commission Representative.
Paul, welcome to your first official meeting.
Hey, thank you very much, glad to be here. I wish I could have my camera on, but unfortunately, I've got my laptop folded in half so that I can have the monitor on. So please forgive my, uh, my absence.
No worries. Alright, so the first thing we have, I actually kind of rearranged the agenda. The agenda looks a little different, but, um, we're gonna, we'll start off with meeting minutes. Uh, I know Elizabeth had sent over earlier the, um, March 18th meeting minutes. And then you've made the, you made those adjustments, right, to the date, correct? And then, um, I didn't get a chance to do the August 17th ones. And while it was a week, so we can do those at our next, um, meeting along with these. Um, but if somebody wants to, unless, if anybody, if somebody wants to make a motion to approve those meeting minutes.
I made a motion to approve it.
Second.
Any discussion? I think, yeah, the revisions have been looked at. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I will vote present as I wasn't there.
Thank you. So, first thing, financial reports. Um, this past week, um, the only, the only, um, Department of Revenue filings that were actually due were CP2 and CB3, so CP3 is just our database entry. So we just, um, input, you know, what we approved at the, our last, um, annual town meeting. So we just had the library building project go into the database, um, recorded that. And, um, but Serena Amor was kind of proactive, um, working with the assessors department. Um, the CP1 and CP2 aren't due until about mid-October, but they were ahead of the game, so they filed those. So we are up to date with, um, and with all our, uh, all our filings. I do have a printout.
But what is the CP1 and CP3 then?
So, I have a printout and I'll pass it around. I shall send it to you all in an email, so we all have it. So the CP1 shows the surcharge that we collected for the year. So I'll just run it down for everybody. So the total surcharge committed to collect for fiscal year FY23 was $139,645.98. There was $1,339.81 of abatements and/or exemptions. So our net surcharge raised for FY23 was $138,306.17. That's kind of what we used to build our annual town meeting, um, recommendations for our formula, the 10-10-10-5. So we, you know, we'll take that number for next year's town meeting, and that's how we arrive at, like, what this year we did 13.5 and 2,500 for the... So, and same thing, well, CP1 and CP2, uh, CP2 is similar where it's just, it's, um, she's giving the recordings of what we have in our accounts. So like when we give our financial, uh, um, reports showing that, you know, we have X amount in each individual category, she's just reporting that back to the state along with these, um, figures of what the surcharge we collected. Dave, do you want to take over with the account balances?
Alright, so I have, um, page 1. Pass around, uh, page 1, page 2, oh, we got some. Everyone just has one.
Oh, it's just one on each?
I take one of each.
Left me posted on the...
Did you post it there, Kevin?
I did not.
Okay, so we, yes, this will be posted on the Dropbox.
Thank you.
Yeah. Okay, yes, so, uh, for the...
Can you guess that would be posted on the Dropbox? How do I get access to it?
Well, actually, I was just gonna make a note too. So Paul, we have, we have a shared Dropbox folder where we keep all of our documentation. So I'll make sure that you get a link to that, so you can also view these, um, documents with our, our records of balances.
Okay, great, thank you very much, I appreciate it.
And then, oh, I'll go with the same thing, we'll send you the link, and then if you need any help, have a key, and then we'll just let me know.
Alright, so the top page, um, the page that has the header on it shows us our categories, which are undesignated, open space, slash recreation, historic resources, community housing. And then the following, the next column is projects which are in progress. And those are maybe shown on the next page, so we'll just put that on hold for a moment. Finally, the, uh, the last column there is really just reflecting, uh, town meeting, the allocation of our expected revenues for next year. So the first line going across shows the balances we had in each of our, uh, designated fund categories prior to, uh, town meeting, uh, June town meeting. The next line across, the next two lines show the, uh, allocations that were approved at town meeting, articles approved at town meeting. Uh, one is just the routine allocation, as Kevin said, the 10-10-10-5. And that shows at a figure of $123,500 from the year last year. And each year, we just give an estimate for that, uh, so we can, uh, be in compliance with the, uh, uh, preservation act. And the next line across is Article 14 for June town meeting, which was the Library of the 207 Main Street Project, that shows that we did allocate $303,000 from the undesignated reserve, along with $20,000 from the historical resources of common. And after those are accounted for, uh, the totals there show what you do have to work with going forward. The next page shows the projects which make up the, uh, CPA projects column, which was taken at 278, 677, 64. So these are projects that are in progress, and, uh, I guess if you have any questions, uh, or if the committee has any questions for the individual representatives of these projects, we'll, um, give them time for that.
So I just wanted to do quick, just 'cause Paul, 'cause you're now looking at the document, just so you have an idea where our balances stand. We have, um, 621,700, we call it, in undesignated, which can be used for any eligible project, um, category. 53,400 in open space, 35,800 in historic resources, 38,400 in community housing. And then also, like David mentioned, that we have 207, prior to annual town meeting, we had 278,677,064 cents in, in past, um, CPA projects that are either, um, haven't been completed yet or in progress. So that's kind of like our, um, that goes against our overall balance. So like, when you're looking at this sheet, you know, once we get it in the Dropbox, you'll notice that the, uh, the balances, the true balance of the undesignated reserve, what we have to use is not 621. You need to take away the, the CPA projects that we have in, that we have already voted to fund.
Okay, got it, so in reality, it's somewhere like more than the four ballpark?
Yeah, so it's actually 426,500.
Got it, understood, thank you very much for the clarification.
And then when you're looking at the second line where, um, he was talking about the, uh, annual town meeting article, number 13, that hasn't been posted yet. So we had estimated a revenue of 123,500. So according to the state guidelines from, um, CPA, you do, we designate 10% to each category. So 13,000 went to open space, 13,000 went to historic, 13,000, um, to community housing. And it's not shown on the sheet, but then another 5% goes to like professional and technical, which, um, covers our clerk and any other, you know, needs, dues, and subscriptions that we have that, um, throughout the year. And then we all put, um, so with that formula, we designated those four amounts to those categories. And then we, we designated 84,500 to go into the budget reserves, which goes into that unreserved, undesignated fund, um, at the end of the fiscal year.
Great.
So yeah, and when you get it, once we get this uploaded and you have a chance to review it, um, if you have any questions, you can always reach out to Dave or myself, and we'd be happy to kind of review and explain the sheet a little bit better. But I'm sure as the town treasurer, you'll have no problem figuring it out.
Well, yes. Should have sent you a picture of my, uh, credit card, like, okay. So the use of debit is a credit is still a little unclear behind this sheet, but, uh, if you give me a day, I can probably explain it a little bit.
Does anyone have any questions about account balances or... Alright, so we'll go into old business. Um, first thing was just see if you see funded project updates. I don't think there's any updates, um, for anything that we have going on. Uh, I think the library is still in the planning process as far as securing contractors and things like that. Um, everything else is still in progress. Um, you know, my, my hard stuff is still like, the lighting is ever lingering just because this is school year.
Do we know where the Housing Authority projects is?
Well, I was gonna say that's the, probably the one gray area, because we haven't had a housing rep, is, um, and I was just looking at like their roster, who they have on, uh, on that committee. But I think I'm gonna reach out, I will reach out directly to, um, Robbie Souza, the director, and see, you know, if there's anything. I had reached out to her prior, um, when Mr. Fontaine was still with us, and to just make it clear that any invoices should come through us for approval before they get paid, and I haven't received anything to date. Um, I know Mr. Ferry from the Highway Department also generally works closely with the Housing Authority on a lot of their projects, so he might be able to provide, um, some information and kind of work as a little bit of a middleman for us. So she covers other housing authorities too, so she's sometimes difficult to get that in, sort of in touch with. Any questions on past funded projects? I snap who, I put the Dyke Trails Committee, I just, I don't know, I think I left it there from the last agenda. I must have missed it, not deleted, so that is, um, not a thing.
I think the cut face does work, right?
Yeah, I know, flying through. Is there any other old business?
What was the status of the trails?
So they, they withdrew their application, um, because they were able to get the funding, um, through other sources. Alright, so under new business, uh, review, discuss, and act the Community Preservation Coalition dues. Um, and actually, it just came in the mailbox today, I had, we, I had received, um, an email from Stuart Saginaw about a week and a half ago, just, um, with an update to the dues. So for the FY24, the annual membership dues at $875. Um, one thing, and it doesn't really make any difference to us, but they, um, they have a new fiscal sponsor. So I don't know if everybody saw, there was an email that went out that they have a new fiscal sponsor for FY24 that they're working with to help, you know, build Coalition, bring in additional, additional funding. And they just kind of changed their billing, so they gave us an updated, uh...
Doesn't even know what the whole, that you see?
So, um, so for the dues payment, I know it went just to me, and I think it went, if I redo our roster, because it went to, uh, Mr. Pruitt, who's not, uh, no longer with us, so I updated him so that I make sure myself and Alicia that this, um, correspondence, but like general correspondence, it does typically go out to everyone. Um, I can look at too, there might be, we might have to make, I know Elizabeth, they just made our roster, some roster adjustments on our website, but we might need to make some roster adjustments on the, um, Community Preservation Coalition website to make sure that anybody new is getting that correspondence. So I'll go in and look at that and make sure that everyone's getting it. Because I think he had took down our information when we did the training, and it's probably, that's probably the last update that Stuart has as far as like his mail list that goes out to everybody. So, and I can forward that to you, just because it is, it is good reading, because it shows you like what partners they're working with to kind of...
Yeah, Paul probably would like to see it too.
Bolster the state, um, matching funds. So yeah, but I have all their information, they have a new W9 and a new how payments, who payments should go to. I entertain a motion to approve paying that FY24 annual membership dues in the amount of $875.
I'll do that.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
What's that cover?
So it's, it's pretty, it's, it's helping them work with, not every town does pay their dues, because they do, they show up in the database, but it's, you know, a good gesture to pay your dues, because it's, they're constantly helping us and through, you know, the reimbursement. So it just kind of helps facilitate some of their, their, their needs.
We've, we've paid this, uh, every year since I've been...
Yeah, I think classically, I don't think we've ever missed an annual dues, um, membership. Um, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Next, review, discuss, and act potential future projects. I don't know if anybody who's representative of, uh, another group or even just anybody has ideas of future projects that we could possibly, uh, explore.
Any open space?
Well, I think I mentioned it at the last meeting, but the Open Space Committee now has a quorum next month, starting in October. So I don't know what the other members are thinking, I, one of the things I'd like to bring up with them is pursuing agricultural restrictions.
What did you say, cultural restrictions?
Agricultural restrictions.
Agricultural restrictions.
You know, so that, um, in exchange for some financial reimbursement, the property owner deeds in perpetuity that this property can only be used for agricultural purposes, purposes. And I believe a producer that certainly has done that in the past.
Well, the state does it too.
Well, the state...
That's 61C, like you're saying things that don't fall under that, maybe they're smaller or something?
So this, but the way it works, and I think maybe you know more about it, Kevin, is the state will contribute, and the town contributes together to arrive at a fair market value, which is the difference between a property as it sits as an agricultural piece of property and a property as it could sit if it was not, you know, possibly a little bit developed then or whatever. Um, and then they pay the current owner the difference. Generally, the contribution from the state is much more than the town. And apparently, at least from one of the things that Stuart sent out in the past, just by virtue of us being a, um, uh, right, I mean, right, a strong community, the state will kick in even more. Um, but there's a lot of things involved in negotiating what that is, and what the percentages are, and are people amenable to it. But, you know, I would like the Open Space Committee hopefully to start looking, talking to farmers in the area of the property, and see if any of them are amenable to that, and, um, hopefully see if that could be funded out of some of these, uh, CPC.
Yeah, I think actually the Trails Committee project is kind of a good example of how that all works, because Trails Committee was gonna receive $90,000 from the state, and they needed to contribute, you know, a certain percentage. And I think that's how they arrived at the $17,000 or $19,000, whatever was presented to us originally. So there's always some level of matching funds. One thing that I'll go, actually, you have Dan, I don't even need to go back, she'll know off the top of her head, is, um, there's also a good program just for community outreach to, you know, so like you could have a forum to invite members of the community, right? You know, and, and, uh, there's like, you know, a grant for that to do, you know, mailers and things like that. Because I remember that came up when I was on with Amor and Jessica.
Okay.
Um, so that's, it's good, because you can get the word out there.
You're saying that could be CPC money?
So, no, I'm saying, I think the CPC money would come more into play as if there was a piece of property that could be placed into chapter land that we would have to contribute or possibly contribute in some way, with, uh, some percentage of matching funds if required by the state. Yeah, I think that's something that the whole town would like to see happen.
Absolutely.
Um, again, too, like even just reaching back out to housing, and I think it'd be good to try to get some, a new member from them in here. I'm sure they constantly have needs, and they actually are like the most eligible category, like the most wide array of projects. They have things that fit into our, our scope of what we can fund more than anybody else, so it would, uh, be good to get a new representative from housing to come in and present some stuff to us, because I'm sure they need some things out there.
They do have members, so, yeah.
Yeah, they do have members, I do, and I'm not sure why they haven't reappointed, um, a new person. That was kind of fresh, I think that happened between our last couple of meetings, because we had our summer break, so maybe it kind of just fell to the wayside, but I'll make sure, reach out, I'll, I'll reach out to all of them, and just make sure they're all aware.
So on the historical side, there are possible future projects at the Segway and the Schoolhouse. Um, we do have, um, FY25 requested to the capital planning, um, to, for architectural plans as to what the Schoolhouse needs and possibilities to, um, restore and bring it back up to, um, snow. So, um...
Which one is that again, the Civic Center?
The Segway and the Schoolhouse, the one room schoolhouse right across the street here.
Oh, okay, across from me, yeah.
That's the only one room schoolhouse that the town still owns at one point in time, but it had four...
What's that one at the historic house, that wasn't a schoolhouse?
That was a schoolhouse, that was at Lower Fourth Corners, and for a long time, that was in the, um, cemetery.
Right.
And they were using it as a tool shed, but then they asked the society if they wanted it, so they moved it.
Because that's only one room also, right?
That's one room too, yeah, there were 14 one room schoolhouses at one point in time. So all of them are, you know, private property except for that one. So, um, the commission has been talking about it, and the goal is to have kind of like a small meeting space museum kind of thing, a place where, a multipurpose, where the kids become like more money school, um, coming to a tour, you know, spend the day at the one room schoolhouse. But there's a lot of issues, you know, like parking, um, septic, um, accessibility. So those are all the kinds of things that we are taking a look at, and hopefully in FY25, we would be, those are the kinds of things that would be addressed.
And that's solely through the historical commission, correct, out of the historical society?
Yeah, yeah.
Because I know there's been things in the past where we talked about, you know, funding private versus public, you know, entities, and I know that, you know...
It gets confused all the time, because basically, a lot of the same people are doing the same thing.
Yes.
So, but the society is a, a separate nonprofit, it's not part of the town government, whereas the historical commission is part of the town. And that's one, the other one that's probably gonna be out there too, just like FYI is the Arden Building, um, where the old library was on Main Street, at 395 Main Street. Well, that's a beautiful building.
Now, does the Historic Commission have the ability to make the recommendation to the town what they think should be done with that building?
We can make a recommendation, yeah.
Would you want it for your own personal office or something?
I do.
Everybody wants that, you know?
I do too. This would be a whole story.
Exactly, exactly.
I want it for an office and a museum, and I, I think it should be that.
Share of space, you know, we can work out sharing.
Yeah, absolutely, yeah. Oh, of course, there's plenty of room to do that.
So, you know, so there's, you know, discussion about that. But again, that is a historic building, and it's town, though, you know, it will need some, some things to be repurposed. Um, and of course, we're always thinking a little bit, uh, you know, continuing our survey project, I'm not quite sure how we're gonna do that yet.
Now, I do have a question, as far as the survey projects go, does that, does, does that, is that cost driven by the amount of eligible houses, or, you know?
No, it's cost driven, driven by how much the cost of a consultant to do one survey, so, yeah.
Well, that's what I mean, does it depend on how many houses are eligible time, you know, age-wise?
No, because we have plenty of houses that are still eligible age-wise, but we don't have money to do that. So we actually picked the houses that we wind up at the very first survey we did, that was the oldest houses in Dyke, and that's what we concentrated on. Then the one that, um, the base two that were, that's still out there, that's almost, um, concentrated on North Dyke for the Mount Hole Finishing Company and, um, partnering Lincoln Avenue and parts of School Street. There is, uh, West Dyke and Wellington Street, Portland Street that still has, means it has a lot of historic properties that needs, um, surveying. Um, and you have bits and pieces here and there that still need to be done. Uh, and it's an ongoing process, because every day, another house turns, 100 years old. So we have houses that are now, you know, those in the 1920s, that are just, you know, meet that age mark, 100 years.
So if you guys are driving, like, we have this many houses that we'd like you to serve, so you're, you're picking?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, that's why I was just asking how you arrived at, you know, the amount of, of the survey.
Yeah, and then, like, the grand, the first year, the state ran kind of through it a little bit as to how many houses they would, would pay for, and then that was a matching one. The second one was driven by how much could, you know, realistically be completed, you know, and they're about the same. Um, so, we'd like to continue, but we're not willing to talk about that.
I was just gonna ask, is the contract that, that you have with the consultant, to get an understanding from me, is it based on the number of units or is it based on billable hours? How, how does the, how does the consultant determine what the value is for what they're giving you?
She has her own rate generally, and I think it's like around $350 per individual one. So if you do a bulk, it becomes more like $250, $275, if you want the bulk part of it.
Paul, do you have anything from conservation?
No, nothing from conservation at this time.
I would just say, uh, you know, kind of same note as there would be with open space. I mean, if there are any land acquisitions or, um, conservation restrictions, um, just always keep, um, keep it in mind that we do have that one designated open space fund where we can help the Conservation Committee, you know, acquire a piece of land if, if, if you don't have the funding available, we could always visit it here as well.
Absolutely, thank you.
Does anyone else have any new business or any other future projects on the list?
New business, because we actually talked about this five, six months ago, in person, probably when we first revisited the bohrang.
Yep.
Which is, um, the idea of, at the time, we were talking about the defunding the bohrang project, because we thought it was solid and not going anywhere, it's not the respect it, but, um, you know, how would we actually do that? And can we as a committee just say, we're withdrawing the fund, this project is over? Or whether that's a town vote? And different now, so different ways. If it was gonna be a town vote, the idea was that we would propose something to be put in the bylaws to, to make that, so that, but it's us or future committees, you know, and so like that. I'm not looking for an app, but like special timing, but I just didn't want to lose track of that discussion. And at some point, maybe we'd make a recommendation about a bylaw change.
Yeah, actually, we may come up with something. Yeah, because I think we even, we have some vague language in our application process, but it's not... Yeah, I'll make sure we make that in the end of April, October.
Do we have any public info?
I don't have anything else on Zoom.
If nobody has anything else, entertain a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion that we adjourn, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned at 6:07. Thank you, Paul.
Thank you all very much, have a great night.
We'll see you next month.
Looking forward to it, in person next time. Looking forward to it, in person next time.